All right. Call to orders, meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, April 19th, 2016. Is there anyone here to speak to anything that is not on the agenda? All right, first, we have some minutes for our April 5th meeting. Planning Board members, did you get a chance to look at them?
Yes.
I motion to approve the minutes from April 5th, 2016.
No, it's a couple of mistakes.
Okay, you got some highlighted?
I can get a market on that sheet, because that's the only copy.
One, it says, was approved 4-0 and it wasn't, because we had three of us here.
Uh, it's good.
All right.
And they had my street spelled wrong. My wife signed in, and our street, it's spelled C-L-A-R-K, not C-L-A-C-H-I-R-E.
Oh, okay, we'll fix that.
All right.
I haven't catched that.
Okay, we'll fix the typo.
All right, so...
I motion to approve the minutes for April 5th with the mentioned modifications.
All right. A second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I will abstain since I was not present. No ANRs, so moving on to new business. We'll open the public hearing with City Council for the zone change request.
Can I have a motion to move to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in session.
All right. Is there somebody here to speak to us from 130 Cottage Street?
Yes, please, podium.
Thank you.
My name is Jamie Fallon, I'm with Goggins Real Estate, North Hampton. I'm representing Mrs. Libby Canazi, who is the property owner of 130 Cottage Street. We have drafted a letter, as well as sent a document over illustrating a map change. We are looking to request or propose having the zoning changed from what is currently R-10 to downtown business. As a matter of fact, while going through this process with Jessica, we had found out that the zoning had been changed in the early 70s from downtown business to residential. Obviously, we don't know exactly what happened there, but there has never been any construction done to the building to make it residential, and the existing uses have always been as commercial, whether it's office space or convenience store, a number of different uses. But what we are hoping that you will consider the change for is because we have a real estate transaction that is pending on this change. Represented here by Chuck Connor, we have Bill Stepler, who has made an offer, and Mrs. Canazi has accepted that offer, and we are hoping for Bill to be able to purchase the building and run his business out of the building, which we're hoping the zone change can happen with that, so, and allow it to happen, so. May I answer any questions, or...
Anybody have any questions?
I'll just add a couple of, just for your own knowledge. So, the EDIC met today, the Economic Development Board for the city, and they voted 7-0 to approve this zone change. And I'll just also note that the Cultural District Committee, that's also a municipal committee under our East Hampton City Arts, has always been concerned about the future of this building as it is the gateway to the Cultural District, and would like to see renovation and reuse, which I think a lot of people would like to see something happen in this building as it is the gateway to our downtown. So, the Planning Department has no concerns with this request.
Okay.
I do have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Okay.
The, how long has the property been marketed for residential purposes? I've seen signs there for other, with other companies. It seems like it, folks have really tried to sell it.
Yeah.
Under the current zones. Do you know, if you happen to recall?
Um, I have seen the marketing for the property, of course. I took it over, I believe, in December as the listing agent. It was marketed all along, and in looking at that marketing, it always was marketed as commercial rather than residential, because it had never been proposed to have residential leases signed, there's no kitchens in it, you know, it's just not set up. So, the marketing, and not only that, but it had always been marketed because of the warehousing in the back and things like that. So, it had pointed out different features that typically only commercial buyers are looking for.
It seemed to me at least a year, year and a half or so.
Oh, yeah.
Total marketing time, perhaps a long...
Seven, seven to eight years, even. Yeah, significant amount of time. Thank you.
And we've had multiple inquiries at the office in regards to that property, has, while it's been on the market in terms of what's allowable uses under the zoning, and we've always informed those inquiries that had been zoned residential, and I think that may have had a lot of people walk away from the property because the zoning would have been too difficult. If they wanted to keep it as commercial, they would have to go through a ZBA process, it just adds to the permitting time. So, I think in order to make this a viable and vibrant spot in our downtown, I think it's necessary to have a zone change and zone it back to commercial what it was in the 70s.
Procedurally, we're making a recommendation for City Council, right?
Correct.
In the public hearing there, are they doing it?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the, yeah.
I guess I just have a question about, so now that we've completed our digital zoning map, so is this piece gonna be able to be, if the change does go through, updated pretty easily?
So, what we now are doing with the company that updates our system is they do it once a year. So, in January, the online system will be updated, but we will know in the planning office, and, you know, if there's a need to come for permits, I think we'll all be clear on what that process is. But yes, it will get updated once a year.
And it is good, well, we did identify this particular property at that, and, you know, my efficiency and pragmatism wanted us to change it right away, so, because I knew we'd end up here. So, I guess I'm glad that we're here, so all the players get to be involved.
Sure, and all the abutters were notified.
Yeah.
That was sort of the, I know that you, and I'm all with efficiency, but when it, when you have to notify the abutters for every property change, that would have been quite the burden on the planning office to do that.
Anyway, it makes sense, so.
Is there anybody else here who has anything to say on this, for or against the zone change? Oh, did I say something?
Well, I'm a resident, 9th Lodge Street, and I have no objection to having this change.
Thank you.
I motion to...
Gotta put it in the record, Libby.
To recommend to the City Council.
Yeah, we have one more, one more comment and thought about the 70s versus now. And my, in thinking back historically, downtown businesses weren't the prime use of property at the time, I imagine, and I imagine that folks said, geez, we have no tenants who want to rent this commercially, so why don't we zone it residential, and then we can maybe make it viable. Kind of, we're in a different situation here today where we have commercial viability in downtown East Hampton. I'm thrilled to see that, so, I think this is a great move.
Great. Anything else, Planning Board?
My motion stands.
Sure. I don't know if everyone heard, you wanna make it again?
I motion to recommend the City Council to, that the Planning Board approves this zoning change.
Can I get a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
So, Jessica, can you remind me? It's been a little while since we've done this, but I should know this. Past practice, we have waited for a written recommendation from the Planning Board before we take our vote. Is there any particular reason why we should do that? I mean, that's just been past practice, so we have time to deliberate. I don't necessarily know that, I don't feel that this warrants it unless, and...
Well, and I think there's also a deal on the line, so I think the quicker we can sort of expedite this process, I think all parties would be happier.
So then, I'm happy to entertain a motion from the ordinance opening.
I move to change the zoning from R-10 to DB.
As a recommendation to the City Council.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, efficiency.
So, before we wrap up, though, just so the applicants are clear, so the council process, you, is this now your vote out of subcommittee?
This is our vote out of subcommittee, so we still have to set, tomorrow night we'll set the public hearing for our next meeting.
Okay, so just make sure you keep abreast of the process and know what date.
So, I can tell you...
It would be helpful if somebody would show up, so at least you can get the date so that you can be here.
First meeting in May, is that, is that a possibility? Usually, it's the first Wednesday.
So...
And usually, that would be at 6:15, likely.
So, we are, tomorrow's the 27th. May 4th.
You need a two week...
Two weeks, so...
Well, I can set the public hearing tomorrow night.
Right, but it wouldn't be necessarily the first Wednesday at that point. It'd probably be the second Wednesday. 14 days, Jessica?
You have to have a 14 day legal notice from the date of the public hearing, you count back basically two weeks, so...
So, that would be exactly 14 days, wouldn't it?
So, if you, if you have a, if you have a hearing on the 18th, then the legal notice has to go in, has to, it has to be sent to the Gazette next week to run on the 4th and the 11th. So, I, I think that's probably the earliest that you could do it, is the 18th.
The 18th, okay.
My apologies, that's the City Council?
Yes.
The City Council.
TTT, finished at town.
I work in real estate, I understand.
All right, well, the longer folks.
Excellent, thank you very much.
All right.
Yeah.
All in favor? Okay.
We're out.
All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, the acceptance of Fox Run as a public way. Jessica, you wanna give us a little overview on this one?
Sure, so you had asked me at the last meeting to draft a memo and do an analysis of, hold on, I gotta find the right folder here. Okay. To basically compare the decision for the subdivision approval, compare it to the Department of Public Works memo that they submitted in terms of what they saw. So, where does that go? Does my... So, I sent you all a memo, basically writing up what the situations are. So, I sent this also to Attorney Kemp, so that she was aware. I told her I didn't think she needed to be here tonight to answer these questions that the board needed to make, sort of, a determination of what you want to do as your next step, and I would email her tomorrow and let her know what the decision is. So, the first is, this is my biggest concern personally, is that the, for the open space, there's a conservation restriction that was part of this development. This was, this was designed as a cluster subdivision and went under the cluster subdivision rules, which means that they are required to set aside at least 50% of the property as open space in order to cluster the rest of the houses, have smaller lots, create a higher density. The CR, conservation restriction, was never recorded. So, I found in the file a draft copy, I've sent that to Attorney Kemp, as well as a cover letter that was sent in June 9th, 2008. So, it looks like a copy of the CR was sent to the City Council, to the state, to the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, because they need to approve it as well, and the Conservation Commission, and a CR that's got a big draft stamped on it, and there's nothing in the registry. So, I think it's been drafted, it just was never, those final steps were never taken. So, the CR needs to eventually get signed off by council. So, this is gonna be something that's gonna slow their process down. Until the CR is officially recorded, I don't believe the Planning Board should recommend that council, because it's, it's the only team we have, really, at this point. And we have, we have another subdivision, the Lathrow Community, which was also permitted as a cluster subdivision and never filed their CR. And so, you know, that's, that's an outstanding item that I've been trying to work with them on, and they're fully aware of it, but I don't want to have that happen again. I really want to make sure that all of this stuff is buttoned up before we give them the road acceptance. So, I was trying to see whether, if the CR was gonna be taken over by the homeowners or whether it was to get conveyed to the city, because if it was just gonna stay within the homeowners, then as long as it's within the homeowners agreement, then it's not as big of a deal. But the homeowners agreement specifically references a portion of the open space to be conveyed to the Conservation Commission. So, it's in the Homeowners Association document, it just has never happened. So, without that being in place, I believe that we should be endorsing a public way acceptance without that being in place. So, that's the biggest issue that I think, out of this list. The performance guarantee, and, you know, this is something to think about in the future, that the board voted in 2010 to release a letter of credit, I think it was $10,000 that was left, had been reduced over times as the development was built. Typically, we release the performance guarantee when all of the public infrastructure is in place and everything's built, and that's what the guarantee is basically for, is if the developer walks away, the city is then gonna be responsible to finish the road and to finish the infrastructure, and that's where that number is derived from. So, once those elements are in place, then the city can release the performance guarantee because we know that those, those elements are in place. However, we're seeing from DPW that even though all of those elements are in place, they're already failing, or they haven't been maintained, or they're not being cleaned. And so, I think in the future, the board should think about reserving at least a small portion of the performance guarantee as, again, teeth to when they come forward for the public way acceptance portion, at least that there's still some financial collateral that the city has to make sure that they can go back in, because if we have to go in, if we accepted this as a public way, we had to go in and clean all the catch basins and repair the road, and that's gonna cost the city money, and we want to make sure that we've got the money to be able to do that. So, it's been released. If you feel like that a performance guarantee needs to be placed on it, I don't know exactly what the procedure is, but that's something to think about, you know, I'd have to check in with the city attorney about, once it's been released, is there a way to put it back on again? I don't know if that's the case, I think once we've released it, we're kind of done. But I am kind of concerned about the lengthy issues on this road and the performance guarantee being released. So, you know, I just think something to think about for future, for future projects. As of the conditions for the special permit decision, the restriction on homeowner use of chemicals and manure fertilizers is in the Homeowners Association agreement, so there's no action there. The storm drains is being addressed by the DPW letter, so the board doesn't need to take any actions there. There's a decision, or a condition regarding berm and natural buffers at the easement line, unless we go out there. I mean, I could go out there and not, the board doesn't need to go out there, but it might be nice for the whole board to go out and sort of see the development in its final. Then, no on-street parking, it's in the, it's in the Covenant and Homeowners Association agreement, so I don't think there's anything that needs to happen there. The street signs is in the DPW letter, the fire hydrants is in the DPW letter, and the utility easements need to be confirmed on the final as-built plans when they're submitted to the city engineer in DPW. And I don't know if those have been drafted or submitted. So, those are, I think really the biggest issue here is the CR, and maybe some field confirmation of that easement line, but other than that, I think, you know, all the conditions in the, in the decision have been met.
And so, because we're gonna wait on the CR, there's less of a press to do the other stuff, because that's gonna take some time anyways, right?
The CR is gonna take time, I suspect. I mean, it's already drafted, so that's a good first step, but it could take several months for them to get the state approval, it's gotta probably go to Conservation Commission first, they've gotta discuss it, there's gotta be, they need to agree to the conditions of the CR, how much public access, you know, are there certain limitations that can be done on that land, no dogs, that kind of thing, no wasting, no dumping yard waste, and that, all that stuff should be in the CR. So, Conservation Commission's kind of probably need to take a look at it, then they'll make a recommendation to City Council, and the council will have to go through its process as well.
So, yeah.
Because this isn't a special permit or, you know, or any of that, there's no time on our end to respond. I mean, it's really, they've gotta get all their ducks.
I, what I would suggest is that you do send a response, so that council can move forward with its process in the public way part, and say, we don't recommend that the road is accepted as a public way because of these outstanding items, this one in particular, which is the conservation restriction. And then, and then sort of close it, because you're just making a recommendation, and then let council and the property owners sort of go through their process with the CR.
Okay, so, but the one thing that remains for us is the stuff with the berm and the buffer? I mean, should we schedule a time to go out there?
It's up to you, or I can, I can run out during the day, and just verify, field verify it, too. That's the other option.
How do people feel about that?
That works for me. I mean, it seems like...
I mean, if there were multiple items, I would say, then I really think you guys need to be out there, but if it's just one item, I can go out and check it.
Okay. I mean, does anybody feel differently, that they'd like to be out there? I suppose anyone who wants to take a look at the project is always free to do it, but...
I drove through it today.
Okay.
I had suggested, as I visited the last meeting, we were looking at a big, long list of items, but with her, when I went down to just that.
What did you think, Jim, while you were out there?
I thought it looked very nice, I was gonna ask, where exactly is this buffer zone? Is it like surrounding the back of the properties?
Um, I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at the...
Should, when you go on a drive, it should be on the left-hand side. When you first enter the place, on the left.
When you first enter, it's on the left?
Yeah.
You remember from when it was permitted?
Right.
Because you were on the board, then?
Right.
Okay. Not to throw you under the bus about the performance guarantee.
Well, I don't know that any of you, you know, the next...
Don't take it, I don't want you to take it the wrong way.
That's when I first got on the board, I didn't know, well, I know a little more than I did then.
We've seen that come up a few times more recently, and I think we need to make sure we're staying on that, that we still have that sort of stick to motivate people. But so, at this point, Jessica, you're thinking of a letter that just says, you know, we're not recommending acceptance of the road...
There's an outstanding item with the...
...issue of A, the conservation restriction, B, verification of the berm and, of the easement line, and C, verification from the DPW about the utility easements?
Or, I mean, I would, I would phrase it that all of the items that have been raised by the Department of Public Works have been adequately addressed by the applicant, something like that.
Okay.
To show that you sort of support, because you all got a copy of that, and you've read it, so, as long as you don't have any issues with that.
Will they come back to us after they've accomplished all those goals, or will it go, if we put out this letter, does it then go to...
Then it's kind of in council's hands, but they're gonna respect the board's comments in regards to those outstanding items, so...
I think that makes the most sense.
And I'm sure I'll be asked to attend and answer questions, so, which I can certainly do.
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
All right, so...
Do we need a motion, Jessica, or are we okay with?
Probably should make a motion just for, just for kicks.
I motion to have Jessica draft a letter to City Council stating that our approval hinges...
We don't, we don't recommend, I think we're just not recommending.
Don't recommend it?
Yeah.
Okay, that we don't recommend it until the open space conservation restriction is recorded, the restrictions, the DPW's...
Concerns.
Concerns are met, and we're not gonna talk about the storm drains.
I think that's it.
No, I think that's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I end it there.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Aye. No opposed, no abstained.
Okay.
All right. Moving right along. The sign ordinance.
All of a sudden, the brakes came off.
I really wanted to get farther along, but last week was a nightmare, and today was just as bad, so. So, I started to populate information. Hold on, let me get the right file over here.
So, I just got this.
Yeah, we all just did.
You just got it, I just...
I had a chance to just review the top part.
We can walk through it, let's walk through it line by line, that's totally... Okay, so the first section is the purpose statement section. So, this really is what the courts look at if this is ever legally challenged, correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse, but...
Correct.
Okay. So...
They don't like any of the purposes that anybody ever gives, so for that, whatever it's worth.
So, I stole some of these from, this is my batch of models and things I'm working off of, so I'm reading through different things and pulling things I like. So, I think, you know, to protect the public health, safety, welfare, that's a good general statement, that's the whole purpose of zoning, anyway. To protect the rights of individuals and businesses, to convey their messages through signs, I think that's sort of a nod to the First Amendment aspect of it. To improve traffic and pedestrian safety as it may be affected by distracting signs, that's a huge element of what this is about, and the courts will go straight to that, that's what they're looking for, is that statement. To promote and protect business viability and economic opportunity, to encourage compatibility and harmony with surrounding buildings, land and land uses, and eliminate excessive and confusing sign display, and to ensure the fair and consistent enforcement of sign standards, that to me is one of the biggest statements in this whole thing, and that's been sort of the crux of the issue with the past one, is that there's been this inconsistency in terms of interpretation. So, if we can make this clear and clean, then the enforcement and the administration will be easy, not only for the applicants, but also for the enforcers.
I love seeing that in there, I know at the last meeting, the mayor spoke about it, and you spoke about it, but definitely, it's good.
So, is there any, anything in there that you feel like is missing, or that we'd want to touch on? I mean, there's things about aesthetics, but I think that gets a little bit wishy-washy, and I, and I think the courts don't really look at that as a true purpose statement if you start talking about, I mean, we could talk about something about community character, but again, Jesse, I don't know from your...
It's all fuzzy, it's all, it all gets to be subjective. I mean, I think these are like really concrete...
I agree.
Sort of black and white, it covers everything that we need to be doing, I think.
Okay. Any other, Harry, or Jim? No? You're good? Okay. All right. So, what I'm gonna do is, just so you understand my methodology here, I'm just going, this is using track changes, so I'm just gonna accept those changes, and so the next version, this will be like the rest of it, and whatever we're working on that day will be the red ink, and I'll keep the, I'll try to keep the dates consistent, so you can keep a record of what we're working on. Okay, applicability. I tried to keep this as simple as possible, again, I'm trying not to make it overly complicated, which I think a lot of these examples do. So, the standards and regulations of this section shall apply to all signs erected, maintained, or replaced out of doors in any zoning district within the city of East Hampton. Unless a signed permit is specifically not required by the standards of this section, it shall be unlawful for any person to erect or replace a sign without first obtaining a signed permit.
So, the one question I have about this, which I had seen looking at some of the other ordinances, too, that I had never really thought of, is the out-of-doors component. And there are some of those ones that do extensive regulation of indoor signs that are visibly outdoors, and I think there's some real question about, like, what is indoors or outdoors?
Well, and there's questions enforcement wise here, too, because say, the best example I can think of is CVS. So, CVS in their windows, they'll put up these big signs saying, what's for, what's on sale that week, or do your banking here, whatever it is. But they're, they're hung from the inside windows with the sign going out, so I feel like Joe has regulated those in the past, is that he's looked at, he's looked at all of that and calculated that as part of the square, dimensional requirements of the square footage of what they're allowed in that zone, and he's taken all of that into consideration. I don't know which way to go on that.
Right, and so, the one I always think about is, I think, like, the moving LED signs are specifically under our current unenforceable guidelines, not permissible, but like, you often see the little ones inside the shop window, you know?
Right.
You know, the open and stuff like that, and so, you sort of, it's a gray, I never really even thought about that.
And that's why I kind of threw that term in there, because I saw it referenced in one, I didn't see it referenced in something else, and I wanted to put it in there as a...
And I think it's gonna be one of those things that we really are gonna need, like, public input on, because I think that's like, it's a real question about what, I mean, you can see huge end runs around all of us, right? I mean, like, the giant F.L. Roberts gas station sign, like, you could put that on top of your structure and build around it, make it an indoor sign, like, you know, I mean, like...
Right.
What people will try to do to get around it, on the other hand, like, if somebody's putting up a, like, this, the ordinance I saw have like, you know, I mean, if somebody's putting up like a open sign in their window, you know, like, how big that's supposed to be? I don't know that we want to be regulating that either.
We can't, under zoning, you technically can't regulate things that are inside.
Right. And so, that's the thing, is, but so, the question is, what makes it structural? I mean, when you put it on the suction cup inside your door that's attached to the frame of the door, like, is that different from hooks that are hanging from the window frame, or...
I want to make sure I understand what you just said correctly. This'll be about signs clearly, but you're saying under zoning separately, that would be if, if we tried to say something other than out-of-doors, they would conflict with each other.
You can't regulate in, interior spaces under the zoning code. You really are only allowed to really look at the exterior site plan and the impacts of that site plan and the use that's happening in the building, but you can't be saying, like, your jurisdiction isn't, "You need to move this wall, and you need to make this office space bigger, and you need to..." That's under the building code. All of that structural stuff's under the building code. You can talk about the use, but you can't really regulate what's happening inside in terms of the...
But so like a, a sign that's inside but facing out and is attached to the structure, it's, I mean, it becomes, and I don't know how much of it is a wormhole we don't wanna go down, or how much of it is a giant gray area that somebody could do whatever they want and abuse it, and...
Right. Maybe, do you want me to pose that to the building inspector, to Joe, and see?
I'd be curious to hear his thoughts. I mean, I'm curious to hear everyone's thoughts, cause I really, I think that's a decision that is, you know, kind of what we wanna deal with, and, and this is gonna affect everyone in the community, and I don't know...
I'm just curious if these other ones have a definition of outside.
Have you ever heard of anyone litigating that they can do it because of zoning?
I'm sure there's been litigation about it. I know, I mean, the thing about...
Well, here we go. Wait, wait, wait. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but... There's definitions for window sign. "Any sign attached, painted, or otherwise similarly affixed directly to the glass surface of a window or door, either inside or outside the building."
Is that art, art existing?
This is from, this is from the models. This is from, this one's Belcher Town. This one is, this is the Wellesley.
But it's their sign ordinance.
There's, yeah, so, um, where was I? "Directly to the glass surface of a window or door, either inside, inside or outside the building, and/or any illuminated sign installed inside the building within one foot of the glass surface of a window or door, and designed to be visible from the exterior of the structure." That's a fabulous definition.
That is a good definition.
Mark that one.
That is a good one. So I mean, that, that seems like a logical way to get your hands on regulating those signs. And then the question is how you're gonna regulate them and what you wanna do with it.
So the, so the question I have to you is, do you, do we take out that out-of-doors statement because that makes it there conflicting and confusing with this window sign thing?
I'd like you to replace it with what you just got.
I think so too, or, or you would just say...
Wouldn't replace it there, but window sign would be a definite...
You would just say any, any signs erected, maintained, or whatever, not specify where, and then in the definitions, we would define signs as including these ones that are inside but outward facing, and blah, blah, blah.
And we'll have to think about whether there's specific regulations in regards to window signs.
Cause that's the kind of differentiation we can make. So I went to this seminar with the AG's office last month. It was only helpful in showing me that there wasn't any real oversight or guidance beyond the decision and our own sort of common sense and kind of like legal analysis. So you, the, the basic guideline the court gives you is acknowledging the fact that it's now a different court, and that nobody on the court agreed with anyone else, and that a lot of it is sort of extraneous information that wasn't part of the holding. Basically, you can't, if you have to read the sign to figure out if it falls into a regulation, it's improper. So like, you can't say like a for-sale sign, or, you know, anything like that.
An open sign.
But you can do it by where it's located or what it does. So, so this is the kind of category you can differentiate. You can say sort of an indoor sign, you know, define it somehow, window sign, and then regulate those. So then it doesn't matter what that window sign is saying. It's more about where it is, what kind of sign it is, that sort of thing. And that very well should be the kind of sign that's regulated differently than the sign on the front of a building, or a sandwich board sign on a sidewalk, or things like that. I think that's a good way to sort of get another category of signs.
What if we said something like, "The standards and regulations of this section shall apply to all signs visible, visible from the out, from the exterior of the, of something, like, something that refers to out-of-doors without saying out-of-doors and putting it where it is located right now?" Do you know?
Well, what if we just say that it applies to all signs erected, maintained, or replaced in any zoning district, but then when we define signs, we can say...
I agree with that.
I mean, maybe we have window signs as one of the kinds of signs.
I think, yeah, and I've marked it.
And let the definition do the work.
Do we have window sign? We did have window sign in ours.
How do we define it?
A sign physically adhered to the inside or outside of a window surface. Window signs are not considered primary signs.
So the sneaky move of taking an illuminated sign and putting it four inches off of the window, the Belcher Town catches, we didn't, we didn't grasp.
Right.
Okay.
We've evolved since then.
Well, that's, Wellesley, Wellesley did that.
Wellesley had that one.
And Wellesley had a lot of input from their town council on this, so...
Is this a new Wellesley?
This, this is actually, I think I sent this to you. This is not, it, it's not post-read.
Yeah.
But they...
They think it covers.
They amended it a couple years ago to take all content-related information out of it.
Okay.
So they seem to think it's a good model for, um, post-read revisions.
Good.
Um, so I like this one, because it talks about within one foot, so...
Right.
I think that's great.
I think that's a good way.
Cause if it's here, fixed to it, then it clearly is, but if it's way out here... Yeah, Harry. It's very philosophical, isn't it?
I guess bear with me.
This is what my philosophy degree actually comes in handy.
If you look up the, uh, in East Hampton, if I remember correctly, uh, when we were doing Stop and Shop, I think all our signs, or whatever we're gonna be writing about a sign, should be referred to, uh, on a building, not a, not a structure.
So what if it's, what if it's independent of the building?
Because if you look up the definition of a structure, then, and on East Hampton, it could be almost anything.
So do you not want to...
It could be a flagpole, it could be a pile of wood, it could be anything, so...
A pile of wood.
You know what I mean, and I mean, uh...
But we wanna regulate this too.
But do you not wanna regulate a sign that somebody puts up on the side of their picket fence? Or that somebody, or the FL Roberts bill?
Yeah, yeah, well, I just wanna make sure that, that somebody could just throw up a structure and say, "Okay, we're gonna throw a sign on top of it," and it's just...
Oh, not, make sure that's included?
Right.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think we wanna make sure that it's, that it's not just on a building, that it could be anywhere.
Right.
Yeah.
Freestanding sign.
Right.
I think that's a good point.
That's all.
Alright.
Alright, alright, so we'll leave that as is, and we'll deal with the out-of-doors thing under the definitions section.
Yeah.
And should I, maybe what I'll do is, under definitions, I'll just add window sign in there, since...
Right, so maybe what we actually are doing in the applicability is just, and including window signs, or, but we don't know how many other categories there are.
No, I think what, what, yeah, I think what we should do is we'll just start populating the definitions as we come up with definitions that we like, and is addressing certain concerns that we have.
Yep.
And that can be like an ongoing section where things are just getting added as we find. And I'll use the Wellesley one, cause it has the one foot, right?
Yep, I like that.
Sounds good.
This is why it's gonna take us eight months to draft this thing.
This is progress.
Okay, so I was hoping to get more of this general regulations section done, but I just, I'm sorry, I didn't have time. So, so application, so I want this to be pretty clear about, right up front of, if I'm applying for a sign permit, what are the steps that I need to do? Who do I need to go to? How much is it gonna cost me? What's my application? What do I, what am I supposed to have in it? All of that sort of general information that anybody's gonna need, and then it's at the beginning of the ordinance, rather, buried somewhere in the middle, which it is right now, in terms of what the process is.
Right.
So, "Submittal and content. Sign permit application shall be filed in the office of the building inspector upon forms furnished by that office," which I got their form, form today. "The application must be signed by the owner of the sign and the owner of the lot which the sign is to be erected." So for instance, in downtown, we've got buildings that are owned by one property, but they're, um, you know, they're renting out spaces. So if you wanna put up a sign, you're the renter, but you need to get permission from the property owner as well in terms of the signage. It's, I think, we do that with special permit applications. If somebody's renting a space, we, we make sure the property owner's signed off. I think it's using that scene. Um, "Application must," oh, I did that. "The building commissioner shall have the authority to reject any signed permit application, which is not complete when submitted."
Alright.
So I could put that later on in terms of application rejection, resubmission, or I can leave it there and be a little bit upfront, saying, um, you know, if it's not complete, then he has the right to reject it. But the next part being what needs to, to make it complete.
Well, my question is, um, are there other criteria? I mean, could he also reject it for it not being, not fitting the, the model of the document? And is it the building inspector that then reviews that application?
He does now. He does all of the reviews for all of the signs for the city.
So the building inspector gets it. He can reject it for it not being a complete application, complete when submitted.
Right.
Should there be something in there as well that says the other reasons that he can reject it?
Um, well, that's why I'm wondering if I can put, if maybe it would be better to move that under the application rejection, because there's a process. So say, for instance, um, and this has come up a lot in the Mills District, and this is something I think we need to think about, is, you know, we've got mills that have got multiple tenants in those buildings, and are frequently coming to the ZBA for special permits to override the sign ordinance, which is how ours is currently written. It's basically, if you don't like what you've got here, go to the ZBA and ask permission, which I don't necessarily care for. I think that there's gotta be sort of reasons why you wanna go to the ZBA. It's like, you need to adhere to this, and then here's the reasons why you can go to the ZBA, you know?
If everybody's an exception, the rule isn't written right, probably.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, um, so that's really what number four is gonna be trying to address, like, why, why it might be rejected above and beyond just, um, let me see if I...
Which will all be size and location-based, right?
Yeah.
And a complete submission.
Right.
I do think you should move it down there.
So what I liked in the Wellesley one is that there's required findings. So the ZBA can, can issue a request for review under a special permit, but it has to meet all of these findings in order for them to do that, which I really like.
Yeah.
Because it sets some pretty clear standards. It's no different from a special permit. You know, you have your criteria for approval. It's the same sort of idea, saying, "You wanna, you wanna go above and beyond what the sign ordinance is? Great. You need to meet these six things in order to do so."
And it helps the ZBA when they have it in front of them, this railroad map.
That's true. So, um, I haven't really read this too closely, but, um, you know, "Sign scale is determined to be in reasonable relation to the development scale, viewer distance and travel speed, and sign sizes on nearby structures." I mean, it's still a little wishy-washy.
Yeah, I mean...
And we gotta stay away from colors. This says, "Sign materials, colors, lettering style, illumination, and form are reasonably compatible." I was reading a post-read thing, um, that basically says that colors isn't, is considered free speech. So you can't, you can't regulate colors either. You can't, you can't regulate, um, topog, like, type, uh...
Type set, yeah.
Type set, um, because they could all be tied to a specific logo for, you know, a, a corporate, like a McDonald's, or a, you know, Panera Bread, or whatever. So you can't regulate color, you can't regulate the types, style. It's not just the words.
Right.
Which I was like, ah!
Unless you probably, yeah, if you have some sort of reasonable safety basis, like you can probably regulate a sign that looks like a stop sign, or something like that.
Right.
You know what I mean, but, yeah, you're gonna, or like, that's how they get into like the lights and the moving parts, is that it can be distracting to a driver, but it's, there's not a lot of leeway.
No.
Which is hard, cause that's what people usually like to do with their sign ordinances, is regulate content.
Right. The color thing threw me for a loop, though. I wasn't...
Yeah.
That made me go, ooh, huh. Anyway, okay, um...
And we generally, we don't want the application and the fee in the ordinance, right? Cause that way we can change it without having to amend the ordinance.
Exactly. So the fee aspect here, um, City Council, I, I don't know if Council would be the one to establish a fee. I, I don't know who establishes the fees. And we, this board establishes the fees for special permits and site plan approval, so I think it's probably the building inspector, not Council.
That might be something we could still reasonably pull from the old sign ordinance. What, who's establishing the fee there?
I mean, I think since it's an ordinance, City Council determines who sets, who collects and sets the fee, but I don't think they have to be the ones that do it.
I don't know if there's anything in here about fees. So, really organized. I have no idea. I haven't seen anything in here about fees.
Say what you said and let them argue about it later.
Well, I mean, we, I, I think we can...
I can just flag it and leave it as a highlight.
Yeah, I mean...
And that's a question. I can put building, I can put, um, building department in there for now, cause I, I mean, I don't know who sets his fees. I mean, we set our fees, so I presume that he sets his fees. The fees are...
You, you set fees for like special permits, just...
We do.
But internally, without any City Council oversight or anything?
I don't think so. I think the board has the ability to just change the fees if they want to. I don't, that's a good question.
But if we do, that, what I think is that if we have that authority, it's something that City Council gives us, cause they approve the bylaw ordinance to begin with.
Right, right. So leave City Council in there for now, and just leave it highlighted, and have them tell us, no, we don't want it.
Or they can, or they could, when we talk to ordinance eventually, they can tell us, you know, City Council will say that building inspector shall set the fee amount, or something, or planning board, or...
Maybe ask the building inspector.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if he wants to.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a note to ask Joe.
Yeah, let's push that down the road.
Okay. Okay, so, "Or we shall establish from time to time review of sign permit fee, which will be published as part of the sign permit application for and paid to the building commissioner upon application for each sign permit issued under this section."
That's gotta be a run-on, right?
That's gotta be a run-on. I'll write "clarify" next to it. And that's pretty much as far as I got, sorry.
That's okay. So looking ahead, though, you have the sort of type of sign, and then also district, right? Is that sort of the general concept of what you're imagining? Like, you'll look and you'll see a wall sign in a mill building. This is what applies.
Yep, so we can either do it, um, I'm thinking that regulations based on sign type, that we will have two charts, and we'll have a chart that has standing signs, wall signs, awning signs, roof signs, window signs. We'll have, I don't know, we'll have a chart in here somewhere.
Is it better to do it as like one section with a table for all of them, like the way we do with, like, special permits?
Well, there may be specific provisions understanding signs that need verbiage to them. So that's probably where we're gonna have verbiage in regards to standing signs, wall signs, awning signs, about how they're affixed, how high, blah, blah, blah. All of the dimensional relationships for each of those different types of structural signs.
And then the sort of you, the permitting stuff.
And then the district are used will be a table. That will be a table.
Or I guess there's two 1007s.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
That's right. We're nowhere near close enough for us to need to be pointing those out, but... We haven't nonetheless.
It's easy to fix.
To be frank, I think page two, maybe three, is about, we could probably digest in a meeting, so...
I mean, this is a good process.
This is a good process.
Yeah, well, it's easier for me too, cause then I don't feel like I have to do it all at once.
I mean, I, my question about all this, that I think, again, we're gonna need to hear from either experts or the community, or both, but you know, I don't know how big of a sign you want on a downtown business sign.
Yeah, full dimensions.
Like, when you're actually, and I know we can look at these other towns, but that's the part that, you know, I mean, I have no problem putting together the structure of the whole ordinance, but, I mean, that part to me is, you know, the actual answer, how big of a sign can I put on my business?
Well, if you want, I can, I can put it on the planning department Facebook feed, and just write a note that the planning board is, has begun drafting a new sign ordinance for the city, and I'm sure we'll have all sorts of opinions here, but...
I wonder if, because, and I think obviously it's gonna have to get to that point eventually and get fleshed out, but the goal was for us to kind of come up with something more...
We're not there yet. I would agree with that.
No, we're not there yet. We're in some preliminary area.
And, and I do really like the idea of starting fresh, I do. But, but I think that in some cases where we're not talking specifically about content, was there a fee, the sign stuff, we can look back to the work that was done.
Oh, sure.
Previously, and try to lend some of that to form this.
Which I'm trying to do. The stuff that I think has, has no issue, I'm trying to put back in.
I mean, what are the size, they have the, uh, size and dimensions in there, I think.
They do, but if you go and look at that, our entire sign ordinance is based on content.
Oh, so...
Every sin, so like you can sort of get it, but...
It's a size for something with this content.
Yeah, and so it's hard to tell which is which and what you want. And it also has a lot of self-contradictions within it.
I, I retract my earlier statement.
But I don't, yeah, so I, I mean, I don't know if we're ready to ask the Facebook world.
Well, I'll just continue. I forgot to put it on tonight, but I'm trying to put a copy of the agenda up-
Yep.
Before the meeting, just again, so that people have another way to get information when they can, when they don't know.
When we get to that section, I would say then, and you're putting pieces, just do the best you can out of that mess to come up with two or three different possibilities, and then we can-
I can also go to the EDIC. I, I, they met today, but, um, I can ask to have, um, to have them put it on the agenda-
Yeah.
And request that they start attending these meetings for discussion, because a lot of the EDIC members were also sat on that previous sign-
Yep.
Um, committee, um, so.
You just need to be careful to express that this is a very preliminary process. What we're doing here is a fuck home.
Well, yeah, I would want to brief them and say, this is what's going on. This is why the board is doing it. Um, they're looking for feedback, they're looking for input, you know. If you have the time available in your schedule, please attend and provide the planning board with some, some input.
Yeah.
Great. How many members are on that committee right now?
Uh, well, they had a seven zero vote today, so seven, I think.
All right, well, thank you, Jessica. This is a good start.
Okay, sorry, it wasn't more.
No, no. I think Jim's right. I don't know how much more we can take in one sitting anyway, so. This way, it's interesting and fresh, and we can come back in a couple weeks, maybe look at some more.
Okay, great.
Anything else? Anybody have? No administrative items?
Um, can I ask what's going on with the master plan?
I've sort of been lagging on that.
Well, I mean, is it, I guess, you know, maybe it's not for tonight, but I think we need to have a discussion about what is really going on with that, and do we just give it up in terms of trying to do a review, or try to have a committee, or, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I just, I think we need to have some sort of closure, because I occasionally get questions, you know, is there a committee? What are they doing? Who's overseeing this?
To tell you the truth, I would, I would like to be able to find out what exactly has been accomplished as far as the master plan is concerned.
But I think Jim and his team did that.
So, I, you'll forgive me, but it's been a little while, but I recall having a bunch of documentation that I handed over to somebody that was all of our notes and all of our bits and pieces. We had a guy, I think his name was John Brunner, if I remember correctly, who, in the committee, was responsible for putting all that together, and he made some progress on it, but didn't complete it, and handed me back his notes, which I gave to somebody. Was it, was it you, or maybe it was Jessica, I don't know.
I don't have it.
And I remember turning in those notes to someone here, so I don't have them anymore.
If you want, if you want to talk to John Brunner, Thursday night CPA meeting, six thirty, downstairs.
What I, and I can say, just for memory, what we did, we did go through every single chapter, and we did make notes on every single line item, and came up with a series of codes, a one-page codes, as to, was it completed, is it not complete? Like, what was the status of every single item in the book?
The only information that I was able to get was from the minutes of the meetings, and the only thing on any of those notes is ongoing, or I don't think I saw anything that was completed.
Well, there are certainly lots of things that are complete.
And I'm sure that they're-
So, but this is a, this document has now been, uh, when I was a consultant working on this document, I started pulling data in two thousand and six. So, we're at the ten-year mark. We're like at the halfway mark for this, for this plan. And so, we need to, we need to do something with it. I mean, I use it in terms of grant writing, I reference it all the time. But I think there are members of the community that really look at that as a guiding document, and so, you know, the question is, what do we do with it? Is there a way to, you know, there's, there's communities out there that have spent tons of money on their master plans. Like, I'm talking two hundred thousand dollars in putting these things together. And they create, you know, living documents where they're housed online, and they're more of a, I don't know, interactive in terms of community members, but, you know, I, I just, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I just, I want to make sure that it's not something that's just forgotten, because we are at the ten, ten-year mark, and we, the city has typically updated them every twenty years, so there probably should be some level of update at the halfway mark, whether it's going through that implementation chart and marking it up somehow, even if it's just a checkmark on the things that are done, whether it's taking-
The work that was done is basically a code for every single item that was done. In those notes, the process of culation began, John Brunner began it, it didn't get completed, all the notes got turned in. That's all I know.
And, and also note that it was done pre-recession.
That's true.
I mean, we're in a different world now than we were.
So, meaning to be redone.
It, well, I just, I just think that there may needs to be some rethought to it in terms of, you know, I don't think that the, that the overall vision has changed all that much. I would think that the community is pretty much, would take that mission statement, the, the mission statement for the community, the vision statement, that's on the front page of that document. I still think that rings true, and I've tried to make sure that it's on the new website when the new website gets launched, because I think it's a good one sentence of who we are as a community, but the question is, you know, are there things that need to be changed, and-
What do you think of her idea about the living document? Instead of having a committee here whose job it is to review it, put it up and let, I mean, you have to monitor it in some way, you don't want it to run wild.
And I don't, I don't-
But let the community at large-
Yeah, and I don't have money to hire a consultant to sort of convert everything, so that's, I mean, any of these things would take money, and I just don't, I, I don't know what the-
You can have it in PDF form, the document, though. It's online as PDF, right?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know what that gets us if we're still not in a position to respond to people, if we're not moving off of things, if, if the individual boards aren't aware of what their own assignments and-
I think most of the boards, and I think that's where sort of the, the crux of the issue is, that we're a community where we have very active citizenship, unlike a lot of other communities. And, you know, we have a housing partnership, we have, um, you know, an economic development board. We have all of, we have an arts committee. We have all of these different committees that basically have a chapter that they are working off as their guiding document. So, the question is, I know the housing partnership has been really good and really active about looking at that master plan chapter frequently and noting that things haven't changed that much, and we pulled a lot of that information when we did the housing plan recently. Um, but the data's different in terms of who's moving into East Hampton. This is, it's changing very fast. And I personally think we're at a tipping point in terms of gentrification, and, um, um, I want us to think about that in terms of the, you know, where we're at as a community is making sure that everybody's accommodated for, I guess. So, we don't have to have answers tonight. I just want to make sure it's not something that falls off the radar screen, that's all.
Add it to the agenda.
Yeah, I guess let's find some time to talk about it more.
You want to add it to the agenda? Yeah, Harry.
Anybody want a CPA update?
Sure.
We just, uh, passed the lighting for the football field for like a hundred and eighty grand. Nice wrong number, right?
Nice.
And Perspont Trust is, uh, looking for funding for a bridge for their property down off of, uh, right back at the Paul Street Properties. You go over the top of the hill down there by the Remand River. Well, coming from the Southampton side, they're going to put a, they want to put a bridge in there. So, they came before us last, a couple of weeks ago, and they're going to want to borrow somewhere around twenty, twenty-five thousand to put this bridge in there, which will allow the, the Southampton residents that cross the river over to our side, and we can go back to their side, that kind of thing.
Cool.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
And, uh, if you look up on, if you go down East Street, you can see they're putting that parking lot in. We funded all that whole thing. I made a request that the CPA gets some kind of credit for, you know, whatever we do.
Plan or something.
Yeah, so they'll say CPA funded, you know, so, you know, that kind of thing.
If it follows the sign.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Wouldn't that be something?
Get it in now. All right.
Well, I was, I was going to ask, uh, pretending to sign ordinance, now what's going to happen if we, we, you know, draft this up really, really nice and everything? What's going to happen to the old signs?
Well, they get grandfathered in.
Can't retroactively do it.
So, they get grandfathered.
This is America, Harry, come on.
That is so tough, because you're going to have some guy with a sign over here, just be one, I mean, it's, you know, the whole thing is just going to be-
Yeah, but like, come to my house where there's no like side lot setback, or, I mean, all of the zoning laws came into effect.
No, I understand all that, but just the idea is, is it just, you know, just weird.
Yeah, we can't do that, even if we wanted to.
Grandfather.
You set the rules going forward.
Uh, one more point to embarrass Jesse. He, uh, I saw his little online blurb today. He is one of the forty under forty identified by Business West. Is that-
Congratulations. I get that. I can't wait to see you.
See a wonderful picture of me. I'm going to do a photo shoot.
Yeah, I wonder if a celebrity over here.
Yep. With a hockey stick in your hand.
With a hockey stick, no less. Thank you very much. And now it's in the public record.
And now it's on the public record.
All right, anything else? Anybody got any baby pictures of me or anything?
I almost sent the link out to the whole board earlier, and I didn't, so.
Can I get a second on the motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.